I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A good afternoon, everyone. Before the start of today's regular meeting, we met an executive session. The board interviewed three engineering firms to replace our municipal engineers retiring. We interviewed Boucher &amp; James, CKS engineers, and Panoni Associates. The board is familiar with two out of three of these engineer services. All three gave very great interviews. They provided us with sufficient materials to make a decision. And now, I think, the board is ready to make an appointment. And the appointment would be conditioned upon the next couple of weeks between now and the appointment on January 7th that the engineering firm would be getting up to speed on the current engineering situation in the township, and that would not be a cost to us. All right? I think two out of three said that. We weren't sure about all -- the third one. So Chair will entertain an appointment or motion to appoint one of the firms, or we can have a further discussion on who we might select. My preference would be Boucher &amp; James. They have a long history with the township. They serve as our land planner now. Most of them are from this area or from Doylestown Township. Couple still live in Doylestown Township. They exhibited the ability to provide all the services that we need. They have sufficient resources within their company to do what we need to do on a municipal level. They seem very attentive to the residents. They would be very responsive to the residents, and they have a relationship with this current board, task force, and I think would be well-served going in the future as well. So I'll put that in the form of a motion. And if there's a second?
I'll second.
All right. Now, are there any other discussions on any of the other firms that we interviewed? Anybody else want to put?
No, I thought all the interviews went well. I thought they were all a good experience, but I do think I agree with you in the motion. I appreciate James would be, should be our township engineer for 2019.
Is that a second? Oh, your second shift. Duh, okay.
And I think they all did a -- I thought they all did a great presentation and a vast amount of material that we've looked over for the last couple of weeks. Just one question about the motion is, and maybe Jeff can, you know, help clarify, can we appoint them December 15th, for example?
Or today.
Or today as a transition and then officially make them?
You'll have to reappoint them again at your reorganization meeting.
So we would appoint, but if we appoint them today, does that do anything to Mario?
No.
No.
No, they're transitioning.
You're just appointing as an engineering firm, not the township engineer.
As Mario sits there and looks at us.
No, well, I didn't know. How many engineers?
Well, you have a traffic eng -- it's not, it's not, no problem with doing that. They're not the official township engineer until the reorg meeting.
Then I'll support Boucher &amp; James as being the engineer effective tomorrow morning or now.
You'll be able to work with them?
I think so.
Okay. Do you have anything to say? Ryan?
No, I concur with everybody's sentiments.
Okay. So there's a motion and a second. Everyone's weighed in. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Very good. Thank you so much. And we also discussed the Police Benevolent Association contract, which is upcoming, and that's still in flux, so we don't need to go into that any further at this point. Any visitors or public comments? Would you please take the podium, ma'am? Introduce yourself with your address. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Elizabeth Thomas. I'm sure a few of you might have heard my name already.
You need to speak into the microphone, or that man behind that door is going to come out and yell at me.
Not that one behind you.
This one?
No, not that door, that door.
I'm Elizabeth Thomas, and I live at 118 Willowbrook Drive in the township. I'm sure a few of you have heard my name already because I have been making calls. Ever since I acquired a dog and started walking him around my property, I discovered a few We have a tremendous raw sewage leak. My property backs up the Nishamani Creek, and so I walk my dog along the creek, and the spillage of the raw sewage. And I brought photos with me that I can bring around and show you. They're on my tablet because it is like a huge lake of raw sewage. Now, I started out contacting the Bucks County Water and Sewer, and I do have for everyone, you can pass them out, this is, because this has been a long process.
We all have a copy. We have a copy.
Oh, you did?
Yes.
Oh, geez, you guys are way ahead of me.
Yeah, we're all prepared, and I think this matter's been resolved, has it not?
Well, I have received some word about what caused this thing to keep overflowing, but no one has gotten back to me on, because it's a massive amount of sewage back there and how we're going to clean it up and if anyone's committed to cleaning it up because it really smells and it's seems to be.
Did Miss Mason reach out to you today?
I actually have left a couple messages on your home phone, and I've spoken with John Butler at the Bucks County Water and Sewer Authority. They are aware of it. They've indicated to me that it, the problem, the initial problem and everything, has been repaired. They're aware of the sewage on the property, but they've been advised by DEP at this point because the weather we've been having and the ground is so soft to hold off getting out there directly. But they will continue to follow on it and work with you to address the situation. And they too indicated, Mr. Butler indicated, that he too would be reaching out, or someone from his office will be, was supposed to reach out to you as well. So, and I was the one who had the Bucks County Health Department out there as well.
Okay. Because I did call, I looked up the names, and I did call your office, but I didn't get to speak to you and.
Yeah, and I left a message, and we got, I was the one who got the Health Department out there initially from the complaint because of the way it came in. So, but I think Bucks County Water and Sewer Authority, you know, they're aware of it. DEP is aware of it, which is very important, and it's being addressed, and I believe the initial repair has been made, and they will continue to follow with you, and I'll make sure that they follow up as well and get it all resolved.
Okay.
Stephanie, does she have a point person that you should, you can give her to talk to about these matters?
John Butler at the Bucks County Water and Sewer Authority is your best bet. He's the man in charge over there who handles issues like this.
Well, when's he next going to contact her, do you think? We should make sure that that happens, so she doesn't languish.
They were supposed to be reaching out, so I would, yesterday, I don't know the, so I'm going to follow, I will follow with him first thing in the morning.
That has been my problem because no one seems to be getting back to me when, that's why I kept raising it and raising it.
Well, I believe, Ms. Mason, when she says she tried to call you today and left messages.
Oh, I'm not saying she didn't try to call today. I'm saying since this began.
Yeah, I keep getting your voicemail. Yeah, so I've gotten your voicemail. I recognize it. I get a lot of phone calls, but I know I've left that on the voicemail a couple of times. So, you know, if there's another number that you have, that might be easier.
Yeah, I have it on here.
Wonderful. Is it on here?
Yeah, my cellphone number and my headphone.
Yeah, we've been leaving messages, I think, on the house phone, so we'll follow up on the cellphone now.
Can I just ask a question? So Bucks County Water and Sewer, they've identified why it was leaking and that they stopped the leak.
Yes, they've corrected the repair because this is the same one with the Duane Road one that we've gotten called on. They're actually the same line, and as you know, it goes over on, and so they've made that repair.
So it's just cleaning it up now, and they can't do it right now because it's too wet.
Yeah.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
But do we, but do we have a timeline when we think?
I don't have an exact timeline. I don't have a timeline, but I will, yeah, but I will follow with Bucks County Water and Sewer Authority and see if I need a time.
We're going to be on top of it. Ms. Mason will be on top of it. Sir, if you have a question, you have to go up to the podium. Thank you.
My name is David Sutton. I live on Duane Road, and I also walk my dog down along the Nishamani Creek, which is Parks Department property. I've been calling Bucks County Water and Sewer since early spring, and I get the guy on duty, and he says, "Okay, we'll take care of it." Call them back, call them back, call them back, and they just blow me off. Now, you're saying they fixed it?
According to John Butler, he said, he, I have an email from him saying the repair was made.
Well, I don't know who John Butler is, but the people that I've spoke to on the phone, the people that came down, which was only two, Bucks County Water and Sewer Authority people, they told me that the system is overloaded, and every time it rains, you get the seepage from the groundwater into the sewer lines, then the sewer lines are full, and that's why that manhole is overflowing. They said the only fix is every time you see it, call us, and we'll increase the pump pressure at the Kings Plaza Station, which is, I guess, a little bit north of Duane Road. And that's their fix. That's what they told me. So I would like to know what this fix is.
Would you tell us the last time you had that conversation with anybody? Because we just found out that Duane Road problem was repaired this week.
Yeah.
So when was the last time you had a conversation with these folks?
When the DEP finally got involved, my girlfriend called them, Elizabeth called them, emailed them.
When was the last time you had a conversation with the Bucks County Water and Sewer?
Elizabeth, do you have that in your notes when the, when the DEP was down there?
Was it, was it in the last week or so, sir?
No.
Two weeks ago, three weeks ago?
Maybe, two weeks ago, maybe?
Well, we think since then, the matter has been repaired, but we'll look into it tomorrow morning, make sure.
Well, that's what I'm saying. The Bucks County Water and Sewer Authority is telling me the only way they can repair it is to build more.
We heard something else, so we'll follow up.
Let's find out.
I would like to know what the repair is that they did.
Okay. Well, we have your contact information here?
I don't know.
Well, we'll get your contact information.
I don't have a number or anything like that.
Where can you be reached?
My cellphone, 267-614-7193. Dave Sutton, 68 Duane Road. Thanks.
Yes, we'll be on top of it, Mr. Sutton. You don't want to stay?
Come on.
Thank you for coming out.
All right. I'm going to make all these announcements. Any other public comment?
Thank you.
Okay?
Thank you.
Yeah? All right, we're next meeting on December 18th at 7:00 PM. An important day is December 18th. It's our last official bicentennial event. That's where you bring your Christmas cards or other holiday cards here with a stamp on them, and then you will have a special franking symbol of the bicentennial logo. So hopefully, everyone will remember to do that. And then we're going to implant the time capsule, or at least do something that looks like we're implanting the time capsule, even though it may not actually go into cement that day. We're going to be like closing it up and getting it, doing an official something. And it's going in somewhere.
No, it's going in if you make sure it goes in, right?
It's going in somewhere.
Come today.
Okay, good. All right, and then, so we'll have cookies and like hot apple cider or something like that to, at 3:00, 3:00 on that day, so please do come. Bring also an unperishable donation for the food bank, so we're using this as an opportunity to help us support our local food bank. All right. In partnership with Premier World Discovery, Doylestown Township Park is offering, and Recreation is offering two trips in 2019. California Rail Discovery, which sounds fantastic, but sounds better, is the Rim and Country Roads of Tuscany, which is in November 2019. So contact our administrative offices for more information. Leaf and Yard Recycling is a drop-off, is every third Saturday of the month, March through December, 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM at the New Britain Access Road to Central Park. Gift-giving ideas, DC movie tickets and ski tickets, and bicentennial gifts, merch tiles, wrecks, and clothing. Park and Recreation gift certificates for programs, park benches, mural prints, dogs around Doylestown poster, they're $12. And one last and new item is Kids Castle's doing a fundraiser, and they're selling bricks for $125. The bricks will be installed around the art walk, and the $125 gets you three lines of engraving so that you can have a permanent place around Kids Castle as they continue to improve this fantastic structure. So that's, that's available as well. Central Bucks EMS Services, they're doing their annual subscription drive, so look for your envelope and do whatever you can to support their endeavors. Minutes approval from the regular meeting on November 20th, 2018. I take it everyone's had a chance. Rick, have you found any typos or corrections or misspellings or anything?
None that I'll bring up right now.
Oh, that's good. Anybody else have any questions or changes?
I do, I have a minor change in the section where I was discussing the Transgender Day of Remembrance. It says celebration of it. I would request that it be changed to observance. I think that was more in spirit of what I was.
All right, that's fine. All right. Any, any other changes, corrections, all in favor with that one change?
I'll make a motion.
Do I make a motion? Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thanks for keeping me legal. Correspondence, none?
No, not this time.
Reports from the solicitor?
I have nothing to report tonight or today.
Chief?
Nothing.
Engineer?
No.
Director of Operations?
Briefly, I included a memo regarding PennDOT project to replace the, a bridge on Lower State Road. This is, bridge is located adjacent to the current pump station that's under construction as part of the sewer project. We were contacted by PennDOT in September about the project. I attended a PennDOT connects meeting on October 18th with representatives from PennDOT, DVR PC, and Bucks County. We talked, they wanted input from us regarding the project and anything regarding details that may impact the project. The project is supposed to replace a bridge over the unnamed tributary from Mill Creek as part of a group that they're going to select the contractor in 2020, and they have two to three years to complete the project. It will primarily be the same width. We asked that the shoulders be widened, and they anticipate that this will be a full closure detour, and that it will last about four to six months.
Four to six months.
This is all summarized in my memo if you're, for the details also. We asked them to coordinate with Bucks County Water and Sewer regarding the sewer pump station, the potential bray and long track development, as well as meet with our Bike Hike Committee to talk about bike lanes, and also to contact Central Bucks School, High School regarding the detour and effects to the bus routes, and also to speak to adjacent neighbors.
Okay.
So right now, it's preliminary design and moving forward.
Dave, you know when the four to six months will be implemented? Is it going to be over the summer?
No, what's going to happen is right now, they're going to select a contractor in the spring of 2020. That con, and this is one bridge of a group, what they call Group U. That contractor can, can build these as they see fit and schedule it as they see fit. So they have two to three years from 2020 to complete the replacement. So we don't know yet when that will occur, but.
Can we help influence the schedule on that? Like if, if you have other things going on that?
We have brought up.
Don't close this bridge because X is happening over here. Do it later or sooner.
Correct. We have brought up the other products going on the area, including closure on New Upper State Road, which will, which will impact this. So yes, we can, we'll be working with them and ask them to schedule around.
When they, what we typically have done is that when they're ready to start and they want to give us their timeline, we do whatever we can to hold them to their timeline and work on the, work on the, you know, the speed and also the detours and the inconvenience to the residents and when they, when it's about to be scheduled.
Yep.
All right, so, yeah, we do like to bring them in and talk to them about that, although I probably won't be here, but.
That's 2023.
2023. Okay. Thanks, Dave. Anything else?
That's it, thank you.
Okey-dokey. Manager?
I have nothing at this time.
Supervisors. Jen, you want to start with Central Bucks Senior Task Force? If you have anything to talk about?
I do. So Central Bucks Senior Task Force has been one of our committees for quite some time, but at this time, it's evolved into, into another type of organization where they're supporting the senior community in Doylestown Township, but there's not as much of a direct connection with our township. They're also interested in primarily focusing on working as advisors to the senior center in our township. So I've had discussions with them, and they feel that it's appropriate to sunset them as a township organization. And, and I agree that maybe it's evolved into something else that shouldn't be necessarily part of our township.
Anyone have a discussion on this? We got you, but you entertain a motion? Would you make the motion?
When, when this was formed, wasn't there some association with the Bucks County?
Before my time.
On aging or something, and that's how it's.
Yeah, I heard the aging and that's how it evolved.
So do we have to go back and ask anybody else to make sure it's, I didn't know what came and when?
Yeah. They've been uninvolved in a long time.
Right, they were, actually, the Bucks County Area in Aging was the one who initiated it with the county commissioners, oh gosh, you know, maybe 15 years ago or more. And we were the ones who, for Central Bucks, sort of took the initiative and formed our own committee with township residents, and then we began reaching out to the other municipalities in Central Bucks, trying to get them involved. And it's ebbed and flowed over the years, and in the last three to five, it's just sort of been slowly, the people have, we have had difficulty. They just haven't found an interest.
Some have died.
Some have passed on and.
Moved on, retired.
And so the, getting new people involved, and they didn't really have a good mission. And so I think the two strong ones that have been here, as Jen said, have really kind of taken a different approach, working over at the senior center as advisors and trying to go from that angle, so.
I think it's time.
Yeah.
Jen, you want to put that in the form of a motion?
I make a motion to sunset Central Bucks Senior Task Force and to thank them for their contributions to our township.
Very good.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Jen. Any public hearings? No?
Mr. Supervisor.
Oh, other supervisors, oh.
The highlight of the day, but.
Ready, go ahead, Ken.
I have no, nothing for tonight.
Rick?
To the consternation of many, I don't have anything to report tonight.
What? Really?
Yeah.
Oh, my gosh.
Those are slow two weeks.
I just have one update. I wasn't at the last Bike and Hike meeting, but I want to update that the Bike and Hike Committee will be applying for another trail grant to further the study of connecting to the circuit via the 202 corridor, Route 313, the New Wawa and the Borough and the Turk Trail Study. It's a competitive grant process, but the committee felt it was worth applying for. No action required from the board, but just a general update. Am I missing anything, Tom Kelso?
It was no money from the township.
Yes. Hence, no action needed by the board.
No money from the township.
It's, it's a feasibility study. We want to get in and prepare for the money we're getting from Wawa. We anticipate applying for a grant using that money as match in the future. And the match for this grant, it's a $30,000 grant request. The match is 20%. It's going to be made up of in-kind services from the township, from us, and from Baker.
Okay. Thank you.
And we want to work with the Borough on it, too, I think.
Oh, yeah, that would be good. Thank you. Anything else?
That's it.
All right, I have nothing. Let's move on. All right. Under unfinished business, permit waiver request from the Anne Silverman Community Health Clinic. You see their request, and you see a copy of our ordinance, our resolution anyway, our decision as to what we do with requests such as this. Any further discussion? The request for waivers totals $7,314.41.
I make a motion, will you follow our ordinance and waive $1,000 only to the Anne Silverman Community Health Clinic?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Got the resolution in place for a reason.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
It's simple.
Yeah, okay. Year of the Bird proclamation. There was a question about the last proclamation that was presented, and it looks like the changes have been made, or at least a change that satisfies my question.
Yep.
Is there a motion to approve the proclamation?
I move to approve the proclamation.
Is there a second?
Second.
I'll just make two comments. One, you know I don't get into this, you know, that's, that's not what, I don't think that's part of our function to get into all the ancillary of the birds and the dogs and the homeless, et cetera. They're all noble causes, but I don't think that's what our charter is. However.
We are Bird Town. Somehow, we got that designation, and we are Tree Town, whatever, USA. So it seems to be in keeping with what we do. Somebody designated us important enough to be Bird Town and Tree Town. Why can't we say, oh, yeah, you're the bird, proclaim?
We have a motion, and we have a second.
I had one other comment.
I like talking to him.
I just want to comment that, again, this goes out into the public.
So?
Yeah. The hundreds of pages we've got, a lot of misspellings, a lot of grammar. I'm not excited about it.
Oh, no.
But something that goes out in the public, we should be reading it. There's no way people read this.
Well, I only read the change.
I just looked for the change.
Yeah.
Admittedly, admittedly.
I don't know if, I mean, Heidi wrote it, I guess, and it went to the committee or whoever looked at it, and nobody looks at this stuff. And I think it's, I know it's important that we put out there that we are a damn good township, and we put out quality material. This is going to go to the Audubon Society, and somebody's going to pick it up.
Well, now that, now that, now that you saw.
I'll read it.
Why don't you just like tell us where the problem is?
It's the biggest part of the whole thing. It's the title. "A Proclamation of the Doylestown Township Board of Supervisors Recognizing." I don't think that's how it's spelled.
I will move, I will, I'll take back my motion, and I will move, I will move to, to approve with the change in the title.
She's moving to approve the proclamation with the change to the title. Correcting, recognizing to, from rec, rec.
Whatever that word is, yeah.
And you make a valid point, Rick.
I mean, it's to the public.
Again.
Okay, all right. And you need Ken to approve.
You going to resecond?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Epstein.
Thank you. Moving on. New business, zoning hearing board from 132 Steeble Chase. Now, this was, this was interesting to me. What's going on with this? We've objected to this, this home-based business?
Yes.
And we said, no, you can't do it, and they're appealing it?
Yes, they, they started running a business out of their home without the proper zoning hearing board application because they have people coming to the home to take swim lessons and things like that. And so Sinclair Salisbury has, had issued the cease and desist order and everything. I would recommend that we send the solicitor to the zoning hearing board. I will say that they have stopped, I have heard from their attorney that they have stopped the operation at the moment, so they have ceased and desisted. And I believe they are looking at possibly relocating to a commercial facility, and
And if that comes to fruition, this may go away as well, and they may end up withdrawing their application at some point. But in case that doesn't come to fruition, we need to be prepared to go to the zoning hearing board and have our solicitor there. It has not been scheduled yet, I believe.
Okay. All right. What do you guys think?
No, I, I agree with Stephanie. I mean, it's, you know, that, that's why we have Sinclair out there keeping an eye on things.
Agreed.
And if, when, if and when they do go to zoning, Stephanie calls Jeff and says, go on the 28th or something.
Is there a motion to, to do same? To send the solicitor?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to send the solicitor to the meeting.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.